I think we're good. Okay, let's give this a try. I would like to call the order in this public meeting of the Board of Johnson County Commissioners on this 12th day of October 2020. Can I have the right date today? At 3:01 PM. Please pray with us if you would care to, and we'll stand for the pledge of allegiance.
Would you bow with me for a moment of prayer? Please do, Heavenly Father, we thank you as always for your gifts and your grace. Dear Lord, as we continue to go through a critical period here in our country, let's just be mindful of that which we recite in the Lord's Prayer, "Your will be done." In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of Wisconsin, one nation under God, individual liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Sheriff, US Department of Justice, Justice Cops Court, Trick or Treating, thank goodness.
Troy Burgess, Johnson County Sheriff. We have a grant, cops grant, that we would like to apply for, $17,000 for one of our specialty units to obtain some equipment that they need.
Second, have a motion, second. Any further? Hearing none, all those in favor, sign and vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Close. Motion carries.
Next, trick or treat hours. We work with a lot of other agencies within the county and the cities, towns. We'd like to make the hours from 6:00 p.m. to 8:30 p.m. I'm not telling people when to can and cannot, but that's the suggested times that we'd like to see folks out.
You said 6:30 to 8:30?
Six to 8:30. On Halloween, Saturday, the 31st.
I think everybody's on the same timeline with Princess.
Yes.
Does it take action from us?
To figure the hours.
Second.
Have a motion, a second, for trick-or-treating from 6 o'clock to 8:30. Any further? Hearing none, all those in favor, sign and vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Close. Motion carries. Sheriff, I'd like to add, just one time for the people listening, just to get on public record. If you do not want trick-or-treaters at your house, please have some kind of signification, letting them know that, such as your light's not being on, or even a note on the door saying, you know, "We're not observing trick-or-treating," something so these kids know what's going on. Kids and parents, so just as a public service announcement.
And it just helps us having those times, because I put extra cars out on Halloween, just to make sure the kids are safe in the neighborhoods, and we've got more units out there to make sure of that.
Dental is always fun.
Yes, it is. Keep the windows rolled up. Number three is quality correctional care. Bill Barrett, Williams Barrett-Wilkowski has looked over the contract that I believe Sheena has as well. They finally come to some conclusions of it, and it's ready for the Commissioners to sign. We do have to present a letter to our current medical provider cancelling their services, giving them 30 days, and that will also be done through the Sheriff's Department and Williams Barrett-Wilkowski.
Sheriff, I know you increased, or they increased the service provided for you, I think it was another nurse, or what was it? I know when, like $7,000 a month.
It is more staff, but it is 24-hour care within the facility. The new medical wing will have someone there. That's kind of why we were looking at the personnel during budget hearings, to have five additional to be able to open that up and have it operating for 24 hours a day.
Eight hundred forty-six thousand, six hundred dollars, right?
I think we're a little bit higher than that right now for the upcoming season, a million, something.
That's what the contract I have says, seventy thousand, five fifty-one, or eight forty-six, six?
That's probably correct. I looked at the bigger number for the entire year.
Yeah, I guess where I was going, that does include the extra personnel that you gave.
True.
Good with all your answers?
Yeah.
I vote for approval.
Second.
Have a motion, a second. Any further? Hearing none, all those in favor, sign and vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Close. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sheriff.
Thank you, Sheriff.
Johnson County Courts, in the Supreme Court, send a grant, and spoken with Brandi on this and told her that she presented everything. Have a motion, a second. Any further? Hearing none, all those in favor, sign and vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Close. Motion carries. And then clerk, white on maintenance license agreement. This is just a number new. Have a motion, a second. Any further? Hearing none, all those in favor, sign and vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Close. Motion carries. Health Department, and number one, just for the record, has been stricken from the agenda. Number two is pending legal review, and number three, pending legal review.
Hi, Betsy Swearingen, Director, Health Department.
My name's Jacey Winford, I'm the new Environmental Health Specialist.
Now Paul DeTeo.
This is my new part-time person, but he's been here a little bit longer than Jacey has, but I wanted to bring them and introduce them to you today, and kind of see how this runs, so they happen to understand about it. Okay, so I'm here today to ask for the approval to enter into two contracts pending legal. This is part of the CARES IT grant that we received. Normally, we wouldn't want to enter into a five-year contract, however, we do not have the funding to sustain these two programs, and the state is willing to fund them for the next five years, so that's what we're here, to ask for your permission.
Is this something we're doing now, or is it?
No, it's two, they're two new programs. Well, the one, the Patagonia Health is a, is a new program. It's a software tracking for the nurses, and it will also help us set up our COVID inoculation sites once we start those, and it's like an electronic records and database keeping.
Yeah, I was kind of looking over the explanation to the Patagonia. Is there a process to where they get into the HIPAA information?
It protects that type of information, that Patagonia does. They specialize in these, these types of building these programs with local health departments throughout the country. And so it's, it's just, are you asking if, will there be a violation of HIPAA, or?
Or is there an added layer of protection?
Yes, there is, yes.
For HIPAA?
Yes.
Because the way it made it sound like is they had to have permission from the patient or whoever before they could even apply this. So to me, it looked like it was another level.
I don't believe, I don't believe so. I don't, I don't, I don't. But I think Sheena will have to confirm that. In all fairness to her, we just sent it to her like Friday after hours, so. And then the identices, we already have the identices badging system, but there's asset tracking, there's volunteer support management, there's linking that we can link ourselves to every other first responder with little scanners and ID, like bracelet ID makers, and it is all of the equipment that we would need, the software updates for the next five years.
Betsy, just curious, what's the cost on these two?
Patagonia, and as you, as you enter into a contract for multiple years, the price goes down. So I would think the first year on Patagonia was about eighteen thousand, but a five-year agreement is in the 50s, I believe. About fifty-two thousand. Was that about right, Brian? I don't know if that?
I read it, and it was a lot higher the first year, but then dropped way down.
It didn't drop way down. I think it averages out to about ten, about, averages out to about ten thousand a year.
You said sixty over five years?
Under, under sixty, yeah, under sixty.
And then on to the identices, the summers?
The identices, the biggest cost with the identices is the yearly software updates on those. We'll buy, we'll buy equipment, and then we'll have a five-year service agreement with them. Together. I don't, I'm sorry, I should have thought to bring that budget with me. I apologize. Roughly, I'm going to say that one was fifteen thousand for combination.
One year?
Five years. But the biggest bulk of that is the equipment, and we do have a, I think initially when we bought that identices, I think we spent probably about seventeen thousand, and so this will be some, some equipment upgrade to that system, some added pieces that we didn't have before, like a new cloud and other. So this one will be very, very neat, that if we partner with other agencies and other health departments, that we'll be able to load up stuff to the cloud, and everybody will be able to add to it and update themselves instead of us having to update them.
And did you say earlier, the states need some funding on this?
That's 100% funding on this. This is a grant. Yeah, this is the CARES IT grant, where the county was awarded two hundred and sixty-four thousand and some change.
Two and three.
Two and three.
Second. Have a motion, a second, on number two and three, pending legal, legal, pending on the identity. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, sign and vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Close.
That would be interesting, this has to be spent by the, by December 31st, so to get the entire grant.
Unless they extend that for.
Yeah, this.
Probably won't go that.
Well, this one is a weird one. They put kind of like a weird caveat on it that they were going to throw, because we were surprised at the amount of money. But they, I think it's because they think we're, we've got everything in line, so we're, we're ready to go. We're just waiting for a purchase order and, and your approval.
Cool.
Thank you.
Thank you, thanks, Betsy.
Our Department, ordinance 2020-0-10. Which we needed this for a while.
Yes. Just a heads up, I'm not sure that this microphone's working, because I can't hear.
I don't think it's working, because I can't hardly hear you.
Exactly.
This one's not working either.
This one is, or was. Luke Mastin, Highway Director.
Just pause for just a second, Sheena, we make sure you're.
Well, if you eat it, it definitely won't work.
I didn't get my snap.
Just point, point order.
I don't know.
Are you trying it on, Sheena?
There's no button on this one.
Yeah, it's a button, what's the one?
There it is. Hey, guys.
Can you say it, here on there, bar force? Or a bar song? Okay, I'm sorry.
Our item on the agenda today is our recommended ordinance 2020-0-10, which would establish three restricted truck routes in Clark Township near the city of Greenwood City Limits. We've had several instances as Greenwood's industrial area has grown, where trucks have been routed through their GPS systems onto roads that are rural county roads and not ideal for truck traffic. We've worked with the city of Greenwood to develop a signage plan that would include signs both within the city limits and out on county roads. Try to provide notifications to truck drivers prior to reaching any of these closed truck, restricted truck route roads. Three roads that are included in the ordinance are Griffith Road between Allen Road and Rocklane Road, Billingsley Road between Griffith Road and Franklin Road, and Clark School Road between County Road 300 East and Hurricane Road. This ordinance would require two readings, so this would be the first reading. If approved, we would bring it back to your next meeting for the second.
So, to get on the restricted route, which is Rocklane Road, that's what you're asking, right?
Where Rocklane Road would not be a restricted truck route.
I, I thought you were wanting to use Rocklane Road.
Rocklane Road is a route that's already used by trucks, yes. Still, the roads that we're opposing to restrict truck traffic here are much narrower, really farm roads, county roads that are.
Where I was going with that is, and I just, Friday, Saturday, and Sunday traveled over through Feraland, of course, across the Clark School Road there, and I went to several trucks coming down Clark School Road, then, you know, trying to get over to 300D and then up through Worthville. So have you thought about working with Shelby County and getting signage just right there at that four-way stop before they get to the Johnson County line and directing up north then? Otherwise, they're going to, they're going to continue down that road, they're going to get boxed in down there somewhere, I guess.
So, the, the ordinance itself covers the signage and the truck restrictions. On roads that are not on this, or within this ordinance, like, for example, the intersection of Franklin Road and Clark School Road, we probably need to look at increasing the radius there to allow trucks to be able to make that turn before they get too far west and can't get back. Now, as far as signage in Shelby County, that's something that we can look into. Technically, there's already weight limit signage posted at that last intersection. So there shouldn't be any trucks on Clark School Road to begin with, and that's already a ticketable offense for any trucks that are driving across our weight limit bridges, so.
You know, the, the other side of that, though, too, is the weight limits don't really stop trucks, and we don't really enforce, enforce that so much. So I think an ordinance should be better calling that maybe down the road.
We can look, we can certainly look at adding signage, or working with Shelby County to add signage at that last intersection as you're coming to the west. Try to send trucks north of Rocklane. An unfortunate reality is really neither Rocklane nor Clark School Road are great truck routes to begin with. They just happen to be probably the best potential routes for trucks that we have in here. But certainly, these roads that are in this ordinance are roads that trucks should not be on in the first place.
And they're not successful when they're using them anyway?
No, they're not.
My point is, to not let them get to that point where we're trying to restrict them from being. We would, we probably need similar signage or something there at Worthville and at by Taylor's Market, because I, I catch them there, they'll head east, trying to get to Clark School Road to get to, they're trying to get to 74, is what they're trying to do.
Yes.
And if we had some kind of signage sending them north, that's where they originate, they come off, come out of Prime or one of those companies. If we had a way to send them north there to Rocklane, and likewise signage there in Shelby County, to send them north to Rocklane, that really takes care of the problem. I don't have a problem doing an ordinance, but what do you do with a truck? He gets down to one of these areas we're covered in the ordinance, what's he do?
So, part of the signage plan that we developed with the county doesn't just put a sign at the road that's restricted. A good example is Clark School Road. There's going to be a no-truck signage for westbound Clark School Road at Franklin Road. Essentially says that ahead, once you get to Hurricane Road, that road then becomes a restricted truck route. So there's signage in that situation to warn drive, truck drivers as best we can, that if they go further, if they intend to go further west, past the points that they have available to turn, that they will be on a restricted truck route. So we've got some advanced warning signage as part of our signing plan at what, essentially, the last locations that a truck could avoid the restricted truck route. If they choose to pass the advanced warning signs and then the ultimate restricted no-truck route signs, then they've missed two warnings advising them not to go that route. And then within Greenwood, mentioned there's a signage plan. A lot of that includes routing signage within Greenwood City Limits. That's why we've worked closely with them to, again, warn truck drivers before they reach that point of no return, and give them opportunities to utilize other roads before they get to these restricted routes.
Again, like I said, I don't have a problem, I guess, if we wanted to do an ordinance. I just don't think it's going to be effective. One, we have weight limits and other restrictions we don't enforce now. The other thing is that it just makes sense to put our prior order emphasis on signage to keep them out of that whole area anyway.
So I didn't provide the signage plan, it's certainly something I could provide if you'd like to see. There's quite a few signs.
I don't, you know, I hate to punish these truck drivers, because like you said, their GPS is taking them down these routes, so. And it's a new experience for them also, I guess. I know the city of Franklin got, got their belly full of trucks at one point in time, really got cracked down on. I thought, that would just be my suggestion, if we work with Shelby County on signage there. I'm not sure what the number is on that road in Shelby County, but it's the last one before you get to Johnson County. And then likewise, city Greenwood do something that, if we had a sign right there by Taylor's Market on Worthville, you know, no, no trucks, no traffic beyond this point, then they would have the option at least to go over to 65 and go up to Main Street and around or something. I don't know. I just hate to see those guys get jammed up out there in the country somewhere.
So, we did a lot of research, trying to determine if there is any, any way to use GPS systems to warn truck drivers restricted routes or weight limit routes, and we ultimately found there's not. In fact, the.
There's not?
No. They, those companies don't seem to have much interest in providing that warning, so there's not a mechanism to do so. We signed up for probably the biggest GPS routing system to try to find a way, if we did truck restrictions, to help notify them, so they could in turn notify people using their system, and there's no mechanism for that whatsoever, so.
That's strange, because they, they can tell you if there's a wreck up ahead or traffic backed up, they got all that information. I'm surprised they don't have. They don't have the technology, it's not so much they don't have the technologies, it's not the will to do it. Because you get into a lot more data input and a lot of that going on, and to be honest with you, if you, if you really talk to those people, such as Steve Barnett, who was a truck driver, and most of the time, truck drivers don't listen to that anywhere. Just like they don't read the signs coming into Franklin. But I will say this, if you talk to Mayor Barnett, he'll tell you that the signage that they did, once they started enforcing it, people started reading it and watching it. So if you look now, going down through the town of Franklin, or city of Franklin, you don't see many semis making that mistake anymore. So I think it would just be a matter of enforcement for a few weeks.
Again, I think that's our plan, is the enforcement, we want the ordinance, but I think it's going to be something that's going to have to be. This is going to grow, because all along 65 is nothing but warehouses, and you're seeing that in Whiteland. So it's, I said it to Sheena today, this list is going to grow of roads that we're going to have to do signage and change the ordinance.
Because we're already out there anyway, because we have to deal with the accidents and the damage and all that.
From the semis.
Police are already there anyway, so now they're just going to be proactive instead of reactive, is what it boils down to.
But in that regard, ultimately, our intent is not to write tickets. Our intent is to ensure that trucks don't go places that they get stuck. And with the advanced warning signage that we developed in the signage plan, we were trying to provide that warning to the drivers before they get to a point that they're going to get stuck. Whether they choose to follow the signs is out of our control. But that's something, especially once we learned that we can't use the GPS systems to help us provide that information. We wanted to make sure we had advanced warning signage as well. So we certainly could look at advanced warning signs in Shelby County, to try to catch as many trucks there as we can. I know that Greenwood internally has had some conversations as potentially doing the same thing on some of their roads nearby in the city limits that they're having drug issues on too. So that's why it's been important that we work together. We're providing as much notification of how to get to the interstate and how to avoid these restricted routes to drivers as we can through signage, both within the city limits and outside of.
And these will travel fast, you know, get out there, hit it through the city of Franklin, too. What about, Luke, and this is just a question, I, you know, I have a lot of conversation with the organization that fights the big double semi trailers and that, those things on our roads, those are the damage to the roads. If they went to the half trailer size on some of these smaller roads, when they know they're going to be on those roads, would that help? Or are these not even made for the half-size trailers?
Or honestly, on the three roads that we picked, probably is not going to make much of a difference. Two of them have two very sharp ninety-degree curves. That, it's really not going to matter what the length of that trailer is. Griffith Road in particular, primary, primary problems we're having there is at the intersection of Griffith and Rocklane Road and Main Street. So part of the signage plan is to catch those trucks on Allen Road, send them south to Worthville Road before they even get to Griffith Road and try to go north at that point.
So what's, because I don't see it in here, what's the size and weight prohibitions that we're in?
So, the way the ordinance is structured doesn't deal with weight limits or sizes necessarily. It refers essentially to the type of truck, which would be a large delivery truck, like a semi truck. The, the reasoning for that is, it's not necessarily the weights that are a problem on these roads, it's, it's the length of the truck.
Weight?
Yeah, and that makes it a little, because we're not basing it on a weight limit, that makes it easier to enforce in the field, the way that the truck is defined. We do have consideration for trucks that might need to get to locations on these specific routes, at which point, you know, they would have the ability to do that, particularly for agriculture or farming.
So when I read this ordinance, I don't see that where we specified.
In the definition of truck. And how we define truck. He's saying there's no size, there's no weight limits, it's a truck.
But truck is very specifically defined on the first page.
Well. I see you specify, let's examine from the pro, pro patients.
On the first page, we say, what is a truck?
What is a truck?
Well, as used ones, ordinance, it means a motor vehicle designed, used, or maintained primarily for the transportation of product or goods. For purposes of this ordinance, truck also includes following. A, a motor vehicle designed and used primarily for drawing another vehicle and constructed to carry a load other than a part of the weight of the vehicle and load so drawn. B, a non-cargo carrying power unit designed to operate in combination with a semi trailer or trailer and includes a drum and derrick deck and plate.
It means, it means not one of these. There's no way that semi was going to make that turn, I'm sorry. I don't care how you, how you plan it, how far you swing out, there was no way that semi was going to make that turn. Now, the, the answer to that is if they want to continue using these trucks, they do make these semi trailers now that have.
They do make these semi trailers now that have motorized, that wheels on, that will follow the curve. That according to the organization that I've dealt with on the trucks, they're saying that they don't want to spend money for that. Because then they wouldn't make the millions and millions of dollars that they make. So they're cutting their profit. These people are, they're honestly, it's, it's like dealing with the rubber. When you talk about the semis. There's lots of ways they can solve this. Smaller vehicles, stop the double trailers. Use the motorized back ends, things like that. They just, they're not willing to do it. The companies that hire these people aren't willing to do that. They're used to making that kind of money. Just, just essentially.
Part, part of the argument for the ordinance is destroying or damaging county roads, right?
Being, primarily being on roads that can't handle the size of vehicle that we're talking about. When I say can't handle, I'm not necessarily talking about the pavement section, though in reality, several of these roads can't. They're just old farm roads. The, but the, the primary issue here is, is essentially the curves and the intersections. That semi trucks in particular cannot make without getting off of the road. Or potentially having an issue like what was shown in the photograph that was provided.
And that's just one?
That's just one.
Yes, the issues with that.
To touch on Sheriff's comments. This ordinance specifically is intended to address the issues we had in this area. But I fully expect as we start to see more industrial growth up and down sixty-five. That we will probably have future ordinances where we need to identify similar roads with similar issues. In order to avoid destruction, having problems trying to navigate.
And, and not only for this, but for construction traffic too. As you and I talked about, we're gonna have some issues with coming up in short. It's the routes that these construction people on dump trucks, semi trucks are gonna be using, using them for safe, you know, do. This is just one of the problems, frankly, honestly, people and all this stuff that's being built, now, works being built.
And I've always been more concerned with weight and size with the county roads. And, and we've talked about that numerous times in the past. You take these concrete trucks coming out I M I, man, they, they turn up roads left and right. They can easily get around these corners that, that you have a concern on. Anyway.
The disordinance, again, specifically geared towards geometry of the road, not necessarily weight limit.
Yeah.
Which, once we start talking weights, makes it a lot more difficult to enforce.
Right.
Field. These three routes that were selected have very specific narrow curves or narrow radii at intersections. That are preventing trucks from being able to navigate.
Yeah, I know there, where I lived before, the city of Greenwood annex, Pushville Road and Emerson. That intersection, those trucks that try to make that turn off of Pushville, go north on Emerson, they take them at the Killaby Pole. I can't say how many times they knocked that pole while we're trying to make that turn. Okay. Thank you.
I mean, I support the ordinance. I just wanted to make sure that the agriculture was covered in there, because I'm sure there's pockets of agriculture still in there.
There are.
Covered, I'm okay.
There are, and there may be needs for, for truck deliveries of equipment or whatever that's to other properties that are on those roads. We make sure that those trucks could still access those. Now, they will have to be careful how they do that, but they are, they would not be fine under this ordinance for accessing a property that's directly on one of the tracks.
As long as you work with Sheriff's Department, we'll be okay. I, they understand the means of this.
Luke, Sheena's been great with this.
That was, I'd love to approve first reading.
I have a motion in a second. Any further? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Tossed. First reading passes. Thank you.
Thanks, Luke.
Air purification project war contract table from nine twenty-eight.
Good afternoon. Dan Carter, I'm project manager. As you recall, we opened bids on September the fourteenth for the air purification project installation. And then we presented to you on the nine, on nine twenty-eight. At that prime time, you gentlemen decided to table it until this meeting. So I am now before you, hoping to get approval to execute the contract. With Edwards Electrical and Mechanical, contract amounts two hundred and twenty-four thousand, nine hundred and seventy-nine dollars.
I'm on the table. I have researched a little bit. And I do agree, the ionization system is a lot better than the ultraviolet utilized. I think maintenance going down the road is gonna be a lot better, cheaper, less expensive for us. Those are my thoughts. I think Commissioner West is waiting up. You might wanna say something.
I've already expressed my concerns on this. It's just the, you said those cares act runs and I wasn't sure that. It was needed. I just wanted to express those before, because we've talked about being prudent with tax knowledge. Regardless of where they're derived from.
I would like to point out, on several of these buildings, it's really an update to the air quality monitoring. As opposed to something totally new. And this is, this is something that, as Commissioner Wall says, it reduces the maintenance. A considerable amount to go this way.
And I'm, I'm convinced of the virtue of what you're saying, that's, in fact, I don't have a problem with any of that. But I don't wanna make a motion to approve.
And I'll second it. And with that, then I, as always, we're, we're gonna have this thing battle over taxpayer funds. But what I want the, the, the public to understand and, and, and why it is prudent to use these dollars as we are is number one. When this is all said and done, a lot of this stuff that we're doing now is probably gonna be mandated by the state to be done in the buildings and in the areas anyway. That's the way the state operates. And then at that point in time, we won't have any of this money to spend and we'll have to find it through local taxation. And secondly, we keep calling this, these taxpayer funds, which they are, but these are funds that are already spent. Us not using them here in Johnson County doesn't stop them from being spent. The money's already spent. It's already being used. It's already been earmarked for this. And if we don't use it, somebody else will. And that's why I'm going the direction I go in. It's not because I wanna spend taxpayer money. This money's already spent, just like grants. That money's already spent. All we're doing is taking a part of it to use for us instead of somebody else using that car. They're federal funds, so all taxpayers are paying for it. So somebody's gonna spend this money and I'm kind of, if we're gonna spend it, it's gonna spend anyway.
Spend it here.
We might as well get what we can for our local people here. So just, so you understand.
I understand.
I'm, I'm not trying to run that ground. I, I don't want people to think I waste taxpayer money, because I'm not. I'm just trying to use it as wisely as I can. And we're benefiting our buildings and our people doing this too, because this will be, it'll be healthier air for our people. It's, it's all good, it's all bad, but we're trying to make the best of it, is what we're trying to do. So anyway, that, I, I've got a motion in a second. Any further discussion?
One thing I do need to ask, on the new jail extension, was this taken into consideration for that?
Yes, it's in the, the new.
It's in the new, okay.
Sure.
I just wanted to make sure. No, but it's, any further? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Tossed.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thanks, Dan.
Guarantee to interview savings contract report. I assume this is just for discussion and nothing to accept, is there?
There's actually three reports. Apparently we're a little behind in getting those to us. So you have, we're on the third year. If you're wanting your two reports to approve and then the signature.
Something we're looking at.
Yes.
I thought we just looked at.
We have to sign off.
Yeah. I don't know what to approve. Actually, I saw that what we had in our page, it, it wasn't much. It was just some numbers that.
That's the report.
It's the annual report required by the state.
Yeah. That, yeah, that's the report required by the state, so. I think we get a more, a better report, don't we, Jason? But this is the one that we have to approve. So I have a fault to say.
You just continue the measurement verification services after the first year.
Yeah, I don't know how the, the justification for these numbers, I don't, I would get that. But it is a report. Yes, I'll move to accept it.
I'll second your acceptance.
Jason, is this something we're seeing? I mean, is this something? No, but I mean, as far as the, the savings, are, are we seeing the savings?
I've seen lower utility bills, yes, in electric and, and gas.
Okay.
I haven't really seen savings in water, but I don't think we really did anything in water.
No, we did not. We didn't do the automatic shuts and all that, so.
But yes, I am seeing savings in utilities. I think we'll see savings in water with the, with the touchless stuff.
Oh, I, I think you will too. Absolutely. And really, it's a benefit we don't really think about, but those only run for a certain period of time.
Yeah.
You know, I don't know how many times they tell you to wash your hands for twenty seconds and you gotta leave the water running, because you're not supposed to touch it after that. So at least with the touchless, it shuts off. I don't know. I walked into a restroom the other day and the, the hot side was on.
The what was?
The hot side. And nobody in there. It just, you know, they forgot to turn it off after they got their towel, so they could turn it off with the towel. Well, there you go. There's right there, that's the money that's coming in. Anyway, was that a motion to approve that?
No, yeah, I guess, here they're just showing the energy, energy costs saved. Forty-six thousand, nine fifty-seven. The bulk of what they're saying, we save money in is operating costs. And I don't know how they determine operating costs. I assume it would be equipment replacement, but anyway, that's, yeah, that's my motion.
And I think in operating cost too, is that because the units now have shutdown times, which they didn't have previous, I think probably has something to do with that too.
Yeah, I don't know.
Cause the units, they're all on or all off.
Yeah, that probably show up in energy savings of it, thank you.
Yeah, I'm assuming that, that was, I'm second.
I have a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Tossed. Motion carries. Renewal of employee health insurance.
Right. Yes. My understanding is that it is your intention to renew the health insurance as it stands. With the addition of the health sync feature, which is a lower deductible for certain providers.
My motion. Verbatim. I'll second that.
I have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Tossed. Motion carries. Renewal business claims.
Well, I don't have anything on claims. I went through it.
Really?
Well, I did it over hands and if the air conditioning was off, my food was late. So I wasn't concentrating. And that's a pretty share.
I'll take you to last before the next meeting, so we can go do that again.
At least you get it resolved beforehand, right?
Yeah, that's a pretty share.
I'll move to approve.
That's second.
I have a motion in a second. Any further? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Tossed. Motion carries. Commissioners minutes for nine twenty-eight, twenty twenty. I have a motion in a second. Any further? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Tossed. Motion carries. Public comments. Anyone all hearts free and clear?
I was gonna, on claims, I didn't bring this up and I'm not disputing, but I'm going back again to nine-one-one. They had five claims for T-shirts. Or it says T-shirt Express, so I assume that's T-shirts. Five different claims for wearing apparel. Their budget, they had forty-six hundred dollars budgeted in their budget proposal for wearing apparel. And I don't know what, why nine-one-one would need forty-six hundred dollars for the wearing apparel, but that was in their budget, was approved. I guess it was approved one, one. I went here for it. Okay. We're ready for.
I, I, I think that one's better than masks with logos on them from, for WIC.
Yeah, yeah. Was it WIC?
I can't remember which one it was. It was last meeting.
Bill O'Sullivan.
I think that's right.
Had embroidered twenty dollars.
Oh, WIC had the nine thousand of corporate.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, that was the other one. Yeah, that, so I'll take that. I'll take the T-shirts over that, just saying, just my opinion.
She did give me a response. I, I questioned her on that. She gave me a response.
And before we, before we adjourn.
I just wanna say one thing. I think everybody needs to be conscious. There could be a burn man if we don't get any significant rain in the next week or two. I think that, I know I would leave port in, in two weeks for a burn man. I don't want to, but if we don't get any rain, we're gonna need to do something, because we're gonna have some, we're gonna want to turn into the west.
And it could come to a point of even a special meeting.
Yeah. If it does continue, I know we're supposed to get a little bit of rain today, but.
It's already low right now, so it's something we need to think about. But just please, yes.
Be conscious of it.
Sans, don't start a fire. If you got a fire going in your burn pit, have some water there, put it out. Just, we, right now, I think we've been pretty good. Haven't heard, Sheriff, I don't know if you have, but I haven't heard a whole lot of.
You're so far from.
Field fires or anything right now, so.
I, I just, I hear, I, I talk to the farmers, they've got a little bit of complaint because they've had some fires with their equipment, just because of the insulin drive.
Right.
People just need to think about it.
Yeah, just be conscious. We don't wanna have to do that if we don't have good people. Just use some common sense. We should be okay now.
Move for adjournment.
Yes, he.
Hi, Sessi.
Oh, oh, hi. Go ahead, Sessi. Sorry, I retract that.
Um, I just wanted to say thank you to Ron for, I, not questioning, but, um. Having a thoughtful discussion about the funding of adult and child in the budget hearings. So I want to say thank you for looking into that.
Thank you. Yeah, I got the particulars on that. No way in the world I could figure all of that out. My God, that thing was, you talk about complicated. But thank you.
We tried.
Always look like that.
Thank you.
Not to criticize them, but just to give more help out of them.
Right.
We, we have a critical need.
One last thing. Get on the boat. Move for adjournment.
Thank you.
I have a motion in second. We're generally zoomed. Thank you.